Chair calls the Stanley County Board of Education meeting of May 6th to order. I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight. Mr. Chris Miller with the Stanley News Press here and Mr. Dave Andrews with the local radio station. Glad to have you here. Any other media here? You're welcome. Without further ado, the Chair has the invocation and the pledge tonight, so if you bow your heads, please. Father, we thank you for this day, your agreements in allowing us to be here. We just ask that you would be with us and guide us in every aspect of our life this night. In Jesus' name, amen. You would join me in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank you for that. Tonight is one of, as we get down to the end of the year is one of the, we have a couple of meetings that are really at high points of the year and that's meetings that we get to give a lot of recognition out and that's one of the more enjoyable aspects of serving on the board. And without further ado, the Chair would recognize Dr. James for about six different recognitions here tonight.
Thank you Chairman Poole. The first individual I want to recognize is Dr. Patty Wilkins, the Clinical Associate Professor of Instructional Systems Technology at UNCC and she's going to recognize one of our middle school students for the UNCC video contest. So I welcome Eli Tula.
Thank you for having us and I know your time is limited, so I'm going to go through this very quickly. This is no surprise to Eli, I actually went to his school today. So UNC Charlotte had a Project Digital Citizenship Award that we received, I'm sorry, $300,000 grant from an NSF grant, National Science Foundation. And what we did was we developed with the help of Mr. Eli Brooks, who works in the district here, I'm unsure of his title, but he worked on five modules and we took those modules and we brought those to West Stanley Middle School. Every single sixth grader at West Stanley Middle School was able to go through those online modules that Eli developed, I'm sorry Elliot developed. Elliot Eli. So, but our goal of the grant is to increase cyber safety knowledge and skills among middle school students, teachers, and technology facilitators. And so in order to do that, we let the students do the five modules online and then after they did that, we opened up a contest. And the contest was just available to sixth graders at West Stanley Middle School and sixth graders at Mount Pleasant Middle School in Cabarrus County. Our numbers were a little low, so we were a little disappointed. So we said, "Let's go ahead and reach out our net further" and we enabled all of the students, grades six through eight, in all of Stanley County and all of Cabarrus County. So this is a huge honor because when we did that, we received a lot of videos and so it was very challenging for us to go through the videos, but we were very excited to have Eli Tula, one of the students as our first place winner from eighth grade at West Stanley Middle School. His video is entitled "Digital Citizenship" and it is actually on the West Stanley Middle School page and I understand they actually put it in the social media, so you can find it there. And so I want you all to make sure that you go to his page or West Stanley Middle School's page and watch his video, very informative video. Digital citizenship is something that's near and dear to my heart, a lot of cyber bullying goes on and so his video was amazing about digital footprint. And so what he won as a first place winner was a certificate, but the best thing he won was an iPad. Now this is an empty box because he already has the iPad at home, but he did win the iPad and we want to congratulate him for your hard work. He did an outstanding job. Thank you for helping educate students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you Eli, I owe you a box of doughnuts. That's an inside joke, he reminded me tonight of eating doughnuts. The next award we have is the State Employees Credit Union People Helping People Scholarship and I want to ask Dr. Alicia Ellis if she would come up and I'll step down and help her present those. And then she also, after that, we will be presenting the North Carolina Governor's School Superintendent's election.
All right. Good evening Chairman Poole, members of the board, Dr. James. I wanted to give you a little bit of background information about the State Employees Credit Union People Helping People Scholarship. It's a four-year program to help North Carolina public school, high school students attend college. The applicants must attend one of the 16 UNC campuses. The SECU People Helping People is valued at $10,000 and awarded over eight consecutive semesters to pay for tuition and fees. The scholarship is only available to graduating public high school seniors who are either members of State Employees Credit Union or the child or parent of a guardian who is a member of the State Employees Credit Union. And Stanley County Schools is blessed to have three recipients of this award after receiving numerous applications from our high schools. So I would like to, at this time, invite Adrian Aran Jose Pinto de Meglio from Albemarle High School. We also have Tamara Rice from West Stanley High School. And our third recipient is Whitley Lowe from South Stanley High School, who couldn't be here with us today because she's got a soccer playoff game, so, but let's give her a round of applause also. If we have any principals here, would they also come join us? I did want to mention that Adrian, his attending major is computer science and he plans to attend UNC Chapel Hill and Tamara will be pursuing a degree in nursing at UNC Wilmington in the fall, so congratulations to these students. Next we have the Governor's School recipient. The Governor's School of North Carolina is a five-week summer program for intellectually gifted high school students. There are areas in the arts, unique courses, and there's two campuses in North Carolina. The curriculum focuses concepts in each discipline and does not involve credit, tests, or grades. And it's a summer residential program. Stanley County Schools had a number of students apply this year and I would like to recognize, invite Alexis Johnson from the Stanley Early College to come forward as our superintendent's Governor's School participant this year. And her concentration will be in math.
So we'll do a pre-employment contract with you before you graduate. So next on the docket is ROTC Award and I will ask Major Reed and the recipient to step forward.
Good evening Chairman, members of the board. I would like to introduce Cadet Durekas Ingram and I just have to tell his story for a minute. Bear with me, I'm going to get a little excited, but I'm excited about him in our program. So Durekas Ingram took advantage of the crosstown agreement allowing students to come to other schools to partake in classes that were not present at their own school. And two and a half years ago, Durekas Ingram was one of the first students from Albemarle High School to come to West Stanley and to Gerald TC. When he walked in the door, I noticed him right off the bat because he had long locks, like dreadlocks coming down, and I thought, "Oh my goodness, we're going to have a little bit of an issue here." My first class, I go over the standards and the policies for Gerald TC cadets and that includes grooming standards. As I went over the procedures, I looked to check and see what Mr. Ingram was thinking and he didn't have a very pleasant look on his face. At the end of the class, there were two students from Albemarle High School. Durekas was sitting second to the closest from the door, only because the other Albemarle student was at the one closest to the door. And the individual behind him had braids in his hair and red beads. You may not know this, but that's not allowed in Air Force uniforms. When the bell sounded, the individual with red beads opened the door and left immediately, but Durekas stayed behind and he asked if he could speak to me. And he said he had a difficult time with my hair policy and asked if I was willing to forego my policy and let him keep his locks. What he was asking me was to violate Air Force policy, but he didn't know that. But when I looked at him, I realized the rich culture and the heritage that I wanted to introduce to my cadets in Gerald TC, so I told him I would think about it and I would give him an answer the next day. I went home, did think about it, didn't sleep well that night, and came back and I decided that I was going to violate Air Force policy and give this gentleman an opportunity because that's sometimes what leaders have to do. And so I made an agreement with him to allow him to have one semester in Gerald TC with his hair long and that if he liked the program and wanted to continue on, then he would have to make the difficult decision to cut his hair. After the first uniform inspection, I cringed when he walked in the door with his nice uniform and long hair, but on the other hand, I smiled because he was in the classroom. And I went and told every cadet in Gerald TC that just because I was allowing him to these relaxed standards, they couldn't take advantage of it and ask for the same. And so we went on, the second week he came in the same manner and then the third week he came back to class and his hair looked like it does today. A few students screamed and I went into the classroom and looked and I walked up to him and I said, "Mr. Ingram, why did you do that? You had the entire semester." And he said, "Major Reed, I don't want to be treated any differently than any other student, any other cadet. I want to be able to participate in everything that every other cadet has the opportunity to." And that began his leadership role in Gerald TC. Fast forward, two and a half years later, Mr. Ingram came to me at the beginning of the year, said he was interested in joining the military. I asked him to study and take the military test. Not only did he pass it, but he passed it with flying colors and achieved a high enough score to be able to enter the United States Air Force, which has the most strict standards. Not only that, because of Mr. Ingram's time that he spent in Gerald TC and endured other students looking at him and laughing at him and making fun of him, because he endured those two and a half years, the Air Force is going to promote him twice. So he will receive two immediate promotions when he joins the Air Force next month. And so that equates to $430 extra a month he's going to get simply for taking Gerald TC in high school. And finally, because of him, next year we have over 20 students from Albemarle High School that are now signing up for Gerald TC next year. So, Durekas Ingram, I just want to thank you for your resolve, for being faithful to come to class every day and to endure, to be a leader, to set a new trend and a new path. And for that, I salute you, young man.
and I'm going to ask Bradley Udi, the Chairman of the Arts Council, if he would step up to the podium and do the honors of presenting this year's Fine Arts Educator of the Year and Arts Person of the Year.
Good evening. Like Dr. James said, I'm Bradley Udi, Chairperson of the Stanley County Arts Council. I'm also a 2008 graduate of North Stanley High School. I also have Renee Van Horn with us here, she's our Executive Director. Tonight, we're here to acknowledge the winners of the 2019 Fine Arts Educator of the Year as well as the 2019 Arts Person of the Year Awards. The Finance Educator of the Year Award, which is affectionately known as the Jim Kennedy Award, in loving memory of longtime arts advocate, teacher, and coach, Mr. James D. Kennedy. The award recognizes a fine arts teacher in the Stanley County Public School System who has made a significant positive impact on the arts in education and who have inspired students to pursue, appreciate, and respect the fine arts. Previous winners include Lori Watson, Michelle Osborne, Stacy Bottoms, Jessica Kaiser, and Frank Pulis. In appreciation, the award recipient receives a $250 classroom grant. Because the recipient of our Arts Person of the Year Award is also an educator, we also wanted to recognize them tonight. The award recognizes persons in our community who have made a significant impact on the arts community as a whole. The recipient of this award is honored with a $250 donation to the arts organization of their choice. Ms. Rebecca Crisco, if you'll come up. She was selected as the 2019 Arts Educator of the Year. She is an arts teacher at North Stanley Middle School and she's been praised by her colleagues for being an amazing team player and for her art blog that integrates art into other subjects across the curriculum. In addition to her work at North Middle, Ms. Crisco has also served as lead art teacher for our summer camp for the last several years. Under her leadership, students create incredible works of art to take home at the end of the week and many of our students say that this is their favorite part of camp. Mr. John Williams was chosen as Arts Person of the Year for 2019. Mr. Williams has been an art teacher for more than 25 years and is currently teaching at North Stanley High School. In addition to his teaching, he is very active in the arts community. He and his students have created beautiful public art displays at the Old Center Theater and the Albemarle Hotel. They also recently created brand-new backdrops for the City Youth Ballet's production of The Nutcracker, in which Mr. Williams had a small onstage role. On behalf of the Arts Council, I would like to thank the Board of Education for their continued support of arts education. The arts are an invaluable part of our community, making Stanley County a better, more creative place to live and work. We are grateful for your unwavering support of our cultural education program, bringing many art forms into the lives of all of our students. The partnership between the Stanley County Schools and the Arts Council will continue to enrich the entire county. So it's my honor once again to present the 2019 James Kennedy Fine Arts Educator of the Year Award to Ms. Rebecca Crisco, as well as the 2019 Arts Person of the Year to Mr. John Williams. And I would also like to mention, the awards this year were created by GHA and they are gorgeous, so take a look at that.
The Chair might take a little bit of liberty here and address Cadet Ingram. I went into service in '69 and we got one haircut a week whether we needed it or not. At Marshes, the barbershop, once every week. And if you go back to that timeframe, that was when the Beatles were still in, haircuts were still in vogue, so most of the guys had long hair and of course you had in Philadelphia and Pittsburgh, you had some of the humongous Afros that came down and all disappeared when we come out of the barbershop the first time and there's a lot of whaling and gnashing of teeth. But one of these days when you retire as a Colonel or maybe even a General down the road and you have your place at the beach, just let your hair grow as long as you want to and remember the good times. Okay, academic accolades, Ms. Megan DePiscuali, did I pronounce that right? Did I butcher it?
It's okay, they call me Ms. D at school because nobody can say the name. And tonight I also have with me Bobby Thornburg, she is the Curriculum Coach at Millenport Elementary and we're going to try to get our slides up. So once again, we're here to present on Millenport Elementary School. Our mission is Wildcats, that is our mascot. We are where individuals learn, do, care, and thrive successfully. And of course, our vision plays off of that, that we want this to be a lifelong process. So demographics, we have a total enrollment of 231 students at Millenport. We are a Title I school. We also house a EC pre-K program for three and four-year-olds. As you can see, for my three-year-olds, we have seven there and four-year-olds, we have five. And then our kindergarten, 33, first, 39, second, 33, third grade, 40, fourth grade, 30, and fifth grade, 44. So yes, we are small. And in addition to having the pre-K program, we also house the Alexander Youth Network Program and we have 10 students enrolled there. They do not count on my enrollment because they stay enrolled with their homeschool, but they are provided with day treatment when they come to us. We have two classrooms set up. On one side, they have a part-time teacher and a part-time assistant that works with them on academics and then on the other side, they go into intensive day treatment with a therapist and a manager that come from the Alexander Youth Network Program. And I will say, we have seen so far, three students transition back to their homeschool this year, so that was big successes for them and we have two waiting in intake, so that program is growing. Millenport had some big changes this year, one of them being me. At the start of the school year, I was Assistant Principal at South Stanley High School and then I got the opportunity in October to go to Millenport. When I got there, I made some big changes. After my first week there, I had to get rid of a combo in one-two to get us in compliance with the state legislation of class sizes. So I separated out to where K3 were all separate classes now and we moved a combo up to four or five to where I have a three-way team there of one teacher teaching reading, one teaching math and science that backed up the data of where their best areas were in their scoring. We also implemented expectations of staff. Every Monday, they have their grade level team planning and also the leadership team meets, which consist of myself, Ms. Thornburg, my bookkeeper, and also my counselor, so we can discuss what's going on. Every staff member was involved in leading an intervention group. As you'll see with some data following up, Millenport was a D school, so we got in there and we are getting that turned around. And so we led some intensive interventions when we got there. Every Monday afternoon, we had them collaborate about their intervention, so even if they didn't teach their child, they could find out how their student was doing. And if we needed to shuffle groups, we would do that. Of course, every Tuesday is our PLC day. We go through unpacking standards, progress monitoring, the data dive, RTI stored, MPD, and Ms. Thornburg leads those for us. And we are constantly in and out of classrooms, walking through, just seeing what's going on. This is a picture of our staff. It's not all of us, but it got some of us in there. We had Colors Day that day for each grade level. And of course, like I said, we were a D school last year. Our overall ELA on grades three through five was a 39%. And Ms. Thornburg is going to take over about kind of what we're doing now and where we're going.
As you can see, here are our one-year gold and three-year goals. Our one-year goal is to increase by 5% to be 44% in ELA and then our three-year goal is 15% to go to 54%. These are just some of the strategies we have put in place. We've had weekly PLC meetings, as Ms. D mentioned. We've completed two book studies on differentiation. We have a school-wide word wall that we are trying to implement with some vocabulary. We have been doing a lot with active student participation strategies in all the classrooms, having teachers' videos themselves and reflect on what they were seeing from their students. We review lesson plans weekly. Wildcat Time is our intervention group and as you see our data coming up with iReady, those were basically formed on the iReady data in our three-five areas. And in the K2 areas, we looked really at M-class and iReady and kind of combined the two together. So we have done a lot with the interventions. We've really worked hard on our guided reading with Fidelity, making sure it followed a great framework, that they were doing exactly what needed to be done with those students. And we also implemented with grades three through five to work on read theory. Every morning when they come in for the first 15 minutes, to get them used to reading on the computer and annotating on notebook paper and kind of working the two together. Here is our current iReady data. We are at 64% overall in our school in ELA. Tier one is at 64%, which was an increase of 16% from the beginning of the year, but our tier two and tier three is what I'm most excited about, is the decrease we are seeing in those and moving closer to that 80, 15, and 5% of the MTSS model that we want to see. And I have to, oh I'm sorry.
I was just saying, this data was of yesterday afternoon.
Yes. And with that, on this slide, our three, four, and five grades have been completely finished with iReady and as you can see here, I kind of want to brag on that fourth grade group. It's been really a group that we've worked hard with and when you see 43%, you're kind of like, "Uh," but they have no more students in red. They're all green and yellow at this point, so we are so, we're moving them. It has been slowly, but they are starting to move and they were actually the only class that had no red in ELA and math. So they are really working hard. And third grade is the same way with math that we will see. And then our MOY was 71% in the composite score. At MOY, EOI, we just don't have enough data yet to put that on there of where we will be. And then our TRC was 58%, which was a 15% increase at BOY. And then our overall math proficiency on EOG was 53.7%, a little better than reading, but we still know that we have a lot of work to do there. And here are our goals this year. We're hoping to increase to 60.1% and in our three years, up to 70%. And then once again, these are kind of the same thing as you saw on the ELA. The math interventions were not as often as the reading because reading was more of our focus there. And currently, our iReady is at 63% in math. Our tier one is at 72%, which was an increase of 34%. And then once again, you can see that our tier two and tier three are decreasing as what we want to see and moving closer, once again, to that 80, 15, and 5%. And then this is just the breakdown of the grade levels and there you can see grade four coming in strong again at 79% in math, so they are working hard.
And just some clubs and celebrations we do at Millenport. Of course, we have our Student Council, our Wildcat Runners, which they placed third in the medal this past year, so they're very excited. I have our Robotics Club, a Stacks Club. I have our Robotics Club, a Stacks Club, the Battle of the Books. We have moved, instead of daily announcements, they do a Thursday Tell-All that the librarian works with them on and they rebroadcast it into the classrooms on Thursdays. They get to see a week's worth of announcements. And one thing I've kind of prided myself on doing there is celebrating things more regularly. So, every nine weeks, I make sure to recognize our honor roll and we have dojo days for our positive behavior. And of course, we had our Christmas music program this past year. And that is some of our students at the honor roll breakfast we did. And then here's just some more students. We have our monthly Wonderful Wildcats that are recognized for their character traits. And then, of course, we have our Spirit Days. We've been lucky this year that Lug Nut came to eat breakfast with us, thanks to Ms. Mandy Milton. And we've also had the Miss Stanley County Outstanding Team visit us. And this year, for the first time, we implemented a Mother-Son Night out that Student Council sponsored and we had a magician come out. And then this coming Friday, we're going to have our Father-Daughter Dance. And so, the community is definitely behind us. They do lots of things to support us. Churches have come out to supply us with school supplies. They have fed the staff lunch. Our PTO does a lot for us. The fire department, they stop in to check on us. Even the Dollar General, my bookkeeper has gone to Dollar General and come back with lunch boxes for the kids. The employees there will send, buy stuff themselves and send it to us because they're like, this is stuff we know not everybody thinks of, so we want to make sure y'all are taken care of. I've started working with the Stanley News &amp; Press and I email news we have to be included in the Millenport News in that column. And we have done a big push to increase our communication, our Facebook, our website. The Marquee, the Messenger is much more active this year. And we're hoping, you know, we want to see this grow still. And of course, moving forward, we're not done yet. We've got a good start this year and our goal is, we want to be a C school, but I want to see us better than a C school because I believe we can do it. So, we want to continue to work with the community and parents to increase our support. We're going to continue to deploy those strategies that are going to help in the classroom, work on team building as a staff. And then we got news last week that Millenport Elementary was accepted into the second cohort of schools that lead. So, we plan to pursue that for the next school year. Alvaron Middle School did that this past year, so we're excited about that. And that's it for us. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. D.
Yes, thank you.
Should have copies of the April 2nd regular meeting, April 8th public hearing, April 11th work session, April 16th special call meeting. Are there any corrections or deletions or changes that need to be made to the minutes? Here in none, the minutes will be approved, or will stand approved as presented. We move into committee reports, instructional, Mr. Chance. And like I say, Mr. Chance, it's good to have you back, again.
Thank you, again. It's good to be back. I had to break my leg to realize how bad I was walking, I guess. Had to learn to walk again, so I'm doing well, thank you. We don't have any report, but I do believe Mr. Poplin has a presentation.
Facilities, Mr. McIntyre.
Yes, we had a facilities committee meeting on April the 11th, at which time we discussed a ag program at South Stanley High School. And we, the full board, that was brought before the full board that night regarding that property to partner with Lucky Clay Farms. And also, Todd Bowers came and presented the capital outlay budget request to be reviewed by the committee.
And I think the commissioners still want to see that at some point in time. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Finance, Mr. Graves.
Thank you, Chairman Poole. I'll just give a very brief update. We had a meeting, a joint meeting between the Board of Education and the Stanley County Board of Commissioners last month where we presented to them a budget request. Hopefully, everybody read the SNAP. They wrote an article about that, who's here tonight and those who are watching on YouTube. It was a substantial increase. I'm not going to go into the details. If you'd like to, you can go back and watch, watch the previous videos. You can also go to my Facebook page, Graves for School Board, where I did a two-hour breakdown of the budget request that we submitted. And just generally speaking, we had requested a 7 and 8% increase over various departments, including facilities and transportation. That was based on the amount of money that we were spending this year and the amount of money that we anticipated that we were going to need next year. Changes basically in state funding for the community that the local funds, which is you and I, the taxpayer of Stanley County, was going to have to make up the difference. And then the biggest request, the biggest part of the request was personnel. We had our joint meeting. There was some very good conversation back and forth with the county commissioners. And again, I would encourage you to go to Facebook and check out the two-hour video that I did on it. We're expecting word from the county commissioners this week on how much we're actually going to get. So, I'm going to reserve any further comment until after we see what they're going to give us. My last comment with respect to that is that this is the first year, and I've said it many times, the Stanley News &amp; Press has reported it. WSBC has aired comments that we've made before, but this is the first year that I believe that the Stanley County Board of Education and the Stanley County Schools and the superintendent have presented the county commissioners with an honest-to-goodness, realistic budget. So, it was a little bit shocking to them, the difference between previous year's request and this year's request. But I, in talks with several individuals, I believe that they understand that the need is there, the need is real, we need to be competitive. Our budget reflected that. So, again, we'll wait and see what they come back with. So, that concludes my report, Chairman Poole.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Personnel, Ms. Vicky Watson.
No report.
And policy, Ms. Crump is at, I think at the soccer playoff game with her daughter.
I've got that.
But it's, we do have a large number of policies here.
I've got that.
Okay.
Okay, I'll review this. I'm on the Policy Committee and Patty did want me to apologize if she wasn't able to make it here. Daughter's in the state playoffs. I think it was the first time South Stanley High School made it to the state playoffs in soccer. So, she's down there and she'll probably come in right when I get done. But in our Policy Committee, as Dr. James has mentioned in previous meetings, we are undertaking a massive effort to update all of our policies for Stanley County schools. And we have contracted with the State Board of Education to help us with that and their staff and their attorneys to make sure that we're covering all of our bases here. And so, there are, we had a motion that came out of our Policy Committee meeting and it was to present to the board for their review and tabling for 30 days to review and update, but that we would approve with amendments the policies. And you can, of course, check these out online. Basically, I'm just going to review with you very quickly. There was a policy on inter-system student transfers. I will talk a little bit about that. A new policy, use of wireless communication devices. I will talk about that. And then additional policies, recommended policies for legal status of the board and school system, just a quick update. Board authorities and duties, again, a quick update. Governing principles over the school system and the board. An update, parental involvement with the school system. Title I, parent and family engagement, school safety, professional and staff development, prohibition against discrimination, harassment, and bullying. Discrimination, harassment, and bullying complaint procedure. Nondiscrimination on the basis of disabilities, student and parent grievance procedures, responding to complaints, grievance procedures for employees, and then prohibition against retaliation. So, there's two policies that I want to just briefly touch on for the board. And that, the very first policy that you see before you is Policy 4030, which is titled Inter-System Student Transfers. For those of you that aren't familiar with the process, any student that wants to attend Stanley County schools from another county has to pay tuition. And the amount of the tuition, if you have one student, is, you know, it's substantial. But it's particularly difficult for families where they have multiple students, two and three students. It can be, it can be very costly. As a matter of fact, it can be too costly for many. So, the superintendent, working with his staff, recommended that we modify our policy where we would charge the first student 100% for the first child, 50% for the second child, and 75% for the third child. And then if there are any additionals, they would pay 75%, which I'm assuming would be 25%. That makes sense, 25.
75% reduction.
Right, 75% reduction. So, we thought that was a good idea. I'm sure the board will agree with that. We just, one of the other things, there's policies and procedures. Policies are sort of like our official legal policy and then the procedures on how we implement these policies. And one of the things the Policy Committee asked the superintendent to do was also look into, as well as the, our Chief Finance Officer, how we could, instead of requiring people to pay that all at once or twice a year, like per semester, if we could break that up a monthly payment. So, we're expecting a report back from them. That's procedural, we don't have to vote on that, but that's something we ask them to do to be, you know, considerate of the cash flow that families have to deal with. So, that's the first policy that I wanted to mention. The second policy is the use of wireless communication devices. This is a new policy, is Policy 4318. We have policies that cover electronic devices, but this policy is really oriented towards recording in the classroom. And most people don't know, but there are strict guidelines pertaining to confidentiality and privacy with respect to students and staff. And so, we wanted to make sure that we were able to put in our policy handbook the appropriate information to guide people that are staff within the system, as well as provide parents with information about what is and what is not permissible with respect to recording in the classrooms. There are people that have recorded in the past and what they don't realize is they're capturing information potentially about the students and also the teachers, which is technically illegal. So, those are the two main things that I wanted to point out from our Policy Committee meeting. And if you don't have any questions, basically, we will pass this over to the board with our recommendation that the board adopt these policies as amended in the packet.
The policies will be laid on the table, 30 days. We will vote on these at our next meeting, June meeting. Okay, any questions, comments? Legislative Resource Network, Ms. Gibson, and I think the state legislature's been working overdrive the last little while.
Dr. James, if you don't mind, I'm going to see if you want to speak to this.
Oh, yes, I actually, it'll be brief. It's 12 pages.
Right, thank you.
So, the House has actually pushed its budget out. They're in conference, actually had a conversation with somebody out of Raleigh this morning. So, now the dance begins between the House and the Senate to come up with a unified budget to present to the governor. There's just a plethora of bills that have been pushed through, I guess, of reduction in testing. I know that's a big hot topic that's been on the forefront. And actually, Chris Miller from the SNAP and after EOGs and EOCs, we're going to get together and do an in-depth article on where testing began and why. It started at the federal level, for those in the room. And it is sort of mushroomed out of control. So, there is an act to reduce that. Our district is actually part of a state pilot and North Carolina is part of a federal pilot to look at formative assessments in lieu of an autopsy at, for better choice of words, at the end of the school year. You know, after you're said and done, it's a little bit too late to look at the data then. The formative assessment helps our teachers guide instruction as we go. And any teacher in the room would tell you, we're huge proponents of using testing as we teach to see if what we've taught has been learned. So, we would love to go to a formative-type system. We were told at one time, we were moving towards that with NC check-ins. There's been some disagreement on that as we've moved forward as a state. So, we do have some pilots out there. And I will tell you, as far as pay's going and teachers, principals, there's numerous bills out there to go back and, I would say, improve our, not only teachers, but also our principals. Used to be on the teacher scale, they were taken off the teacher scale. There was a barrage of bills that come out that really made it hard for us at Central Office to figure out what we were to pay you as a principal. So, they really muddied the water with a lot of different things. So, I think there is some common sense coming out of legislation to go back to something that's simple, that we can all look at, the teacher scale. The most interesting thing that I've always have been concerned about is the starting salary, which I think is still too low. But at the upper end of the pay scale, $50,000 was pretty well what a teacher can make and you topped out at 50,000. So, most people in a career that start at 30,000 and top out at 50,000 probably wouldn't have remained in that career. So, there is a movement in the legislature to actually raise the top of the scale to $60,000. And there is also talk about putting the master's pay 10% incentive back. Those are win-wins for a lot of people. If that can happen, you could honestly, at 30 years, if you're National Board certified and master's certified, you could actually end up earning your last 30-plus years about $85,000, which in my personal opinion, is about where teachers need to be, they actually need more than that. But 85 would be a huge improvement over what we currently pay. The other part we've got to work on is starting salaries. It's hard to attract young people. And I've said it before, I do go out and talk to the students every quarter. Evidently, next time I talk to them, hope I need to bring some doughnuts for West Stanley Middle School, as the young man reminded me. But as I talk to those, and I can tell you, 10 years ago, 50% of the kids would tell you they wanted to become a teacher. And sadly, it's probably less than 2%. And the rhetoric in the nation as a whole with teachers has impacted that greatly. I actually sent the board an article, a national article, that shows a projection for 110,000 teacher shortage this coming year. Within the two, next two to three years, there's a possibility of a quarter million teachers missing out of classrooms. That would have a substantial impact on our economic ability as a nation. And if you don't think so, three years from now, when we're in a recession, you can go, I was right. I also told the public, it's not if, but when, and when occurred at UNC Charlotte. We're in a different world, guys. Every week, this world becomes worse. So, we've got to take the blinders off and be serious about the safety of our students. So, those are the bills that are coming out. My hopes are, I was just talking to Attorney Louder, my hopes are that the politics will get out of the way and the safety bills will go ahead and be pushed through so the governor can sign them and make some block grants available for safety. There is an improvement in several millions of dollars in the safety realm, but it is a block grant. It's not money that we're guaranteed, so we do have to apply for it. So, and I would just tell you, stay tuned and I will start pushing out stuff to all users as I get it. This is a good update, I can probably share with you. But here's the problem, sometimes people take this as gospel. I can give it to you today and by tomorrow morning, there'll be a whole new list. And there'll be changes to what was pushed out yesterday. So, it becomes a little confusing. And I was talking to the superintendent's rep, he called me this afternoon and actually was in Raleigh and they were debating on the floor today. So, again, as I encourage teachers, you know, voting comes up next year in November, the best way to change education in the state of North Carolina is change those that control it. And it's not going to change until we do that. So, again, I would tell you to be cognizant as an educator. And I did reference this again, but the last major election, only 34,000 educators voted. If you take those who are currently employed and retirees, you're looking at about 130,000 educators. If we could just rally the troops of educators to all go out and vote, we would change the future of education. So, we'll keep you, stay tuned. There's a lot coming out and there'll be a lot of information in the next two weeks that come out. But so far, there's some promising things. The sooner the better in my mind with safety money, so we can get started applying for some grants. So, I will say, while I'm talking about the safety money, there was an article about the quarter cent sales tax. And I have heard it out in the community, so let me just dispel this one rumor and I'll move on. We did not have the money to do what we've done safety-wise. What we elected to do as a board is to use our brain and to put student safety first. Instead of asphalt in a driveway or repairing a tennis court, we chose to take that money and to provide it for student safety. So, anyone out in the community that would... So, anyone out in the community would, that would say we had the money, no, we don't. I know exactly what we have, Georgia does, Todd does. And again, we made a concerted effort to protect our children first, and we're gonna continue to do that. Uh, if we have to let tennis courts go and basketball courts go, we're going to protect our children. So, we have knocked off at least two or three items off that list Chris reported on. We have plans to continue that. Uh, again, depending on local funding, we'll knock that list out hopefully sooner than later. So, thank you, Chairman Poole.
Thank you, Dr. James. Uh, Reckelman instruction, Mr. Danny Poplin.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I have two items. One is not listed. Uh, I just wanted to give a shout-out to Ms. Jennifer Floe. I think she, uh, excuse herself a few minutes ago. She took over our robotics competition this year, and we held the robotics competition Saturday. Uh, it's a little bit short to have those folks here at the board meeting, but you will see all them in their glory at the next board meeting. Uh, but like I said, she put together, uh, the robotics. I know Mr. Poole had been in there in years past and seen what a great, uh, event that was. We had a few issues, decided to do internal this year. Uh, so we're very excited. I won't, uh, give away the fire, we'll hold that to the next meeting. But if you have a chance, please just thank all the coaches and all the students, and of course, Ms. Floe, for putting that together this past weekend. Uh, Mr. Miller, uh, was so kind to be there, uh, and it was a, a good day, and I think he's gonna have an article coming out maybe about next weekend.
Sometime this weekend.
Sometime this weekend, that's for no pressure, I'll just put you on the spot, I apologize. Uh, oh, of course, I knew that. Uh, but please be on the lookout for that article, uh, and like I said, we'll recognize those folks, uh, at the next board meeting. Uh, I do have one item that does require action. Uh, AIG plan, uh, every three years, we have to, to put a plan together and submit to the board for approval. You have that in your packet. Uh, normally, in the past, Ms. Gacy Spade, uh, worked on that, she was a middle school director. Uh, of course, we know that we were out, uh, without a middle school director, uh, Ms. Spade came, and then Ms. McLendon took her spot, and then, uh, and of course, is, is in the leadership of a school right now. So, I wanna just, uh, take the time, I think Ms. Angie Scafe is here in the back, who worked, uh, so much on that, and of course, her team. Uh, if you have a lot of questions, uh, I'm, of course, gonna step over to the side and probably call Angie up to take those. Uh, but it does require action, um, and we just asked the board, hopefully, again, you have time to look at it, if you would approve our AGI plan for, I think it is 2019 through '22, I think is how it's listing.
Move approval. Motion to approve by Mr. McInnes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second, Mr. Graze? Is there any discussion or any questions that anyone wants to ask?
I'd like to make one comment, Chairman Poole.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I had the pleasure of being at the, um, meeting that Ms. Scafe presented the AIG plan, um, along with the AIG teachers in the county. Um, I was just so highly impressed. I want you to know that, Ms. Scafe, um, and, and all of your, all of the teachers. Um, as I said, I'll be your strongest advocate ever for this population of students, the AIG and the honors students, but, um, I just wanted the board to know that, um, her presentation was outstanding, and she even involved, um, in groups, stakeholders, people, um, within the community, parents of AIG kids. She involved everyone, um, as being a part of this plan. So, um, I applaud you for that. Um, and again, just thank you for all you do, and, and our AIG teachers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Any other questions or comments? Uh, if there are none, all those in favor of the plan as presented by Mr. Poplin, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Calvert.
Chairman Poole, members of the board, I'd like to draw your attention to the personnel agenda. Section 1 is for information. Section 2 requires action.
Mr. Chair.
Can we pull section 2A for closed session, please?
You may. Okay. Uh, need a motion for two, section 2B through...
Move approval of section 2B, B, B, C, D, and E.
The motion is to approve B, C, D, and E under section 2. Do we have a second?
A second.
Have a second. Any discussion? If there are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries, and we'll vote on A after we come out of closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calvert. Ms. Georgia Harvey, you have a report.
Hi, Chairman Poole, I have a five minutes report that I would like to recognize Todd Bowers for surplus items.
Chairman Poole, members of the board, in your package, you should have a, uh, supply list of vehicles that we're requesting permission to sell, three surplus vans that have been taken out of the fleet, a, uh, 1996, 1997, and a 2002, that we're just wanting, uh, your approval to put on GovDeals and sell.
Move approval.
Move to approve these items as surplus. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any discussion? If there are none, all of them in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Move, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Next item is, uh, public comments. Uh, we have four people signed up. Three are signed up to speak on the same topic. We could restrict that to one, but since we have less than five people speaking, I'm gonna let everyone go ahead and speak, uh, as long as we don't go over 15 minutes with, with five speakers. I don't have a problem personally with people speaking to the same subject. So, with that being said, Edie Dedman, is that correct?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, you have the floor for three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Edie Dedman, and I am the mother of the owner and director of Melissa Kathleen's School of Dance. Um, I'm speaking tonight on her behalf because she could not be here. She's teaching students. The students in her studio feed from nearly every single school in Stanley County. This is, proposal will be extremely detrimental to her business, but that isn't the main reason I'm here tonight, only one of them. I'm not going to go into all the problems that this will cause for families tonight, and will only highlight what it will do to her business and others like it. The newly proposed time change will delay her afternoon start times by at least an hour and a half. She currently starts from 3:00 to 3:30, da- different days, different times, and finishes at 8:30 every night. Parents will not want their students out after 8:30 at night, particularly after they've still got to go home and do homework and have dinner and things like that. Other after-school activities, um, such as music lessons, gymnastics, and intramural league sports will similarly be affected, as well as other business like hers. That is going to cut her income by one-third, because you're taking an hour and a half four days a week, it's gonna cut her income by an hour and a half. There are numerous studies that show children who engage in organized activities outside school perform better academically and are more confident individuals. She realizes completely that academics are important, but universities look for well-rounded students who are going to bring more to the table than just good grades. With all the cuts to arts, PE, and sporting programs, we are greatly hindering our children's ability to complete activity, compete in college admissions and acceptance. Dance, music, theater, and other organized activities outside the school provide students with balance, time management skills, leadership skills, and overall healthy mind and body. They will be active contributing members to society, and universities recognize that. This school board proposal will make these activities impossible to continue for some students. How will athletic art programs be affected? What you plan to do about the after-school sports when you have half the children finishing at different times? When these children feed into other programs with other schools in other counties, the difficulties are gonna be enormous. This proposal, if we can call it that, um, she was told that it's a done deal, but will have a trickle-down effect into all the other activities and family time. There is no shame in admitting that you're wrong. I think it's time, with all the opposition, because it's been plain and clear, I think it's time for the board to re- admit that they maybe made a mistake and need to reconsider. The bottom line is that not, is, this is not the best interest for all our students, parents, teachers, support staff, and independent businesses providing extracurricular activities to the Stanley County youth. I ask you to reconsider, and don't be afraid to say, "It's okay, we made a mistake." Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Dedman. Um, Carla Poplin.
Um, I'm not very good at public speaking, but I thought, um, it would do my children disservice not to show up tonight, um, and I appreciate y'all taking comments. Um, I have two main areas of questions. The first one is, surrounding counties have recently sent home information stating that they are going to vote to go back to an 8:15 start from a late start time with their elementary students. These changes are due to negative impact studies that they've had done. These schools are Kannapolis City Schools and Cabarrus County Schools. They are opting to go back to an 8:15 start and have buses be more efficient by combining routes and putting more children on each bus. So Concord and Kannapolis are saying that this is not working. Why are we rushing to implement a system that is seeing negative results? Do we want to have the same result here in our county? We should be learning and improving upon what surrounding counties are doing, not repeating their same mistakes. Please reconsider and take time to look at these studies and figure out why these surrounding counties are backing up and putting, 'cause we can do the same thing. The second set of questions, if you stated enrichment will be offered for students at the late start schools in the mornings. What about the afternoons for early start schools? For myself, I have two children, my oldest is an EC self-contained student who will be at an early start school next year. Myself and my other younger child will be at a late start school. Why is my son at an early start school not entitled to the same benefits and opportunities as a late start school? Should I withdraw my late start student and move her to an early start school out of district so that we'll all be at school at the same time and we all get the same opportunities? Will I be forced to quit my job at my late start school? Why is a late start school valued more than an early start? Why aren't we just giving enrichment to late start schools? What are your plans for parents of early start school students who work at a late start school? Will my child from the early start school at Amron Middle School be able to be bused from there to my school, Central, and wait for us? In your handbook, it states, "As long as the school is within the district, this is allowed." Will you be doing this type of busing with stagger times or not? We have no idea, 'cause we don't know the plan. Or will you be offering equal and fair opportunity for afternoon enrichment for the early start schools? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. This is Mr. Matt Thomas, is that correct?
Yes. I'm Matt Thomas, administrator of the Parents Against Stanley County Staggered Start Times. Now, I'm here tonight to ask the board to overturn their decision to the staggered schools' start times. Our group is 543 members strong. We have a petition with over 340-some parents that has signed against it. Um, we believe that this could be detrimental to our children, the parents' jobs, and some of our local economy. There's too many questions left unanswered for this decision to have been made without information being given back to the parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. This is Ms. Melissa Belk.
It's like the green mild walking down through there. All right. Hey, good evening. Um, I wanted to come and just share a couple things. Um, number one, I know that Stanley County Schools, um, has come, I was at the, uh, combined meeting, has gone to the commissioners with what we are deeming as a realistic request. Um, I'm not from around here, so I didn't grow up around here, but I've been here about 20 years now. Um, and I don't know if it was just out of political politeness, or, um, your southern hospitality, or, or what it was, but, you know, I came from West Virginia, which we have the toothbrush jokes and things that we need to deal with. But when I came to Stanley County, um, when I first came to North Carolina, I actually lived in Union County for a while. So, I substitute there, got a real good look at their system, and then was, I moved to Stanley County. And, um, I really was taken aback a little bit by what I was seeing, and maybe even the lack thereof. And, and I support the budget request. I know it's kind of a big leap of faith, but I'm asking teachers who have left Stanley County Schools, to surrounding counties, come back and, and share your story with our commissioners so they can hear it. Um, I'm asking, I know of six teachers right now that have already secured jobs in other counties. Um, I know of about nine teachers that are looking to leave the county this summer, if they can hook a job in a surrounding county. I know of four teachers that are looking to leave the county to increase their pay because they're close to their retirement time. So, they wanna get those best-paying years to, to get in that retirement pay. So, um, we do have a situation on our hands, and yes, I understand that some people stay in Ca- Stanley County because you're from Stanley County, but a lot of us are not from Stanley County, and we work in Stanley County. But this younger generation, they're more transient, they're not that old-school player anymore. So, I encourage parents, I encourage teachers, administrators, um, people that are in support of keeping, um, our good teachers, um, getting in good teachers into Stanley County, if they would just, you know, email their county commissioners, write to them, show up at the meeting, sign up to speak. Stanley County is a great place to live and to grow up, and we wanna keep it that way, but we don't wanna just stay with the status quo. We can make it better. We can do better. We need to do better. Our future rides on it. And so, I really appreciate your time to speak tonight. I appreciate the, um, the people who spoke before me and their concerns, and I know that you, um, heard them loud and clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Belk.
And, uh, so thank you for watching the podcast.
Next item, superintendent comments, and, uh, Dr. James, if, uh, I know we did have a group that went to meet with the staggered system somewhere, and if you wanna relay any of their observations or whatever else you want to address, but you would mind incorporating that in with your comments?
Uh, I certainly will, and actually, I do appreciate those that have brought concerns to us. And I would tell you that no decision in life is not gonna have pluses and minuses, no matter what we do. The only reason that the board had to consider stagger bell times was the fact we have 15 full-time open bus positions, which is morning and afternoon, then an additional eight to nine either morning or afternoon route. So, when you add the number of kids that are affected by not having consistent bus drivers, it's well over 750 kids. So, first and foremost, and I'm sure the board's mind and mine as the superintendent is, safety of students. We're working diligently to, um, provide next year a app called Here Comes the Bus, so you as a parent can set parameters that will be signaled off of GPS on the bus to let your child have ample time to walk to the bus stop, because in the day where we could stand at the bus stop or our dads built us a little hut to stand in the rain at are gone, because if you'll recall, in Rubinson County, a young 13-year-old child stood at the bus stop waiting on the bus and was kidnapped, raped, and murdered. So, safety... So safety no longer is in the school building. Safety has landed at the bus stop. So we have to think differently than we used to, and again, there, no matter what decision the board looks at, there's always going to be things to consider. And the young lady did mention Kannapolis Schools, so I am in a southwestern regional cohort with the 11 superintendents that are around us. We make up the largest population of students in the state of North Carolina. We do meet once a month, and we talk probably once a week. So I'm very good friends with Chip Bucknell, who was in Kannapolis City Schools. They are moving from 345 to 315. But the rest of the story, as Paul Harvey would say, is that they were not pairing middle school and high school on the same bus, but now they're going to. So now they have a different problem, because there's parents that do not want middle schoolers or high schoolers on the same bus. So you're giving up one issue to rectify another issue. So in that conversation today, Chip said, "There's no perfect decision." So no matter what we make, we appeased parents who didn't like the 345, but now my phone's ringing off the hook for parents that do not want middle schoolers and high schoolers on the same bus. So there is no, there is no perfect world. If there was, then we wouldn't be having to make this decision. But again, we appreciate your input. There has been a ton of input. I would encourage you to go to our website, because there's pages after pages of information, and I am going to ask if Teresa Bundy, we did send a group down to Wake County, which has over 50 schools that start at 8:45. They have about 180 elementary schools, so over 35% of their schools start at 8:45. And Kannapolis was brought up. And again, I meet with all these guys on a monthly basis. I actually have a meeting Friday. If you look at Cabarrus County, they have its own, so does Union County. Charlotte Meck, I won't even get into Charlotte Meck. It would take a statistician to figure out how they do busing, but it's different in every zone you live in. But if you would, Ms. Bundy, if you'll come up and bring Meredith with you, and if you just want to say a few words about what y'all found out at Wake County.
We have lots of words, so just give us a high five when you're done.
Just as a, hi, just as a kind of introduction, we spoke at the last board meeting as teachers, but also parents. And just to clarify, we don't speak for everybody. We speak specifically for ourselves and also for students that are going to be starting a late, at a late start school. I think at the last board meeting, there was, there wasn't anyone here that represented an early start school, and so that may be some of the miscommunication about where, where that came from, when the early start school times were not addressed at the last meeting. And so I did want to say that, but in essence, we attended a meeting with Wake County, and we met with three principals of elementary schools who are on the tiered schedule, and we also met with the chief operating officer. And basically, when I came up to the meeting last, last time, I had four major concerns. My first was, if we're going to do this, we need community partnerships. And so I know that we are going forward and asking businesses to meet with us, because we don't want to hurt businesses. I think we want to work with them. My next concern was flexibility for staff in working, knowing that I work at a normal school start time, which is currently there, and then my, my two children will go to a late start school. I asked that if we're going to do this, that we implement an enrichment program. I was speaking specifically for the late start schools, but I think that's also something that's going to be covered with the early start schools. And then I also asked about support for afternoon transportation for my children who are involved in early start after-school activities. Just some support with that or ideas so that we can move forward with it, so.
Okay. We were, our first question on the way to Raleigh was, "Why are we going to Wake County?" I mean, polar opposite to Stanley County, but it was wonderful, a great time. We were concerned that we would have enough questions, and we actually kept them longer than they had intended. If they can do it in Wake County, we can do it here. I am a proponent for great education for kids. I started teaching in 1985, so I have a long, I've been seeing a lot of things, seen, had a lot of changes, and I'm here that if we're going to do something, we're going to, let's do it really well. Let's do it where our kids are in a great place, that our staff are affirmed, and that, like I said before, we can be a model. They are huge. If they can do it on a large scale, we can scale it back and do it for our county. One thing that was important to me is they did not look at, okay, how are we going to do this for the county? They looked at each individual school. We met with three principals who had three specific populations, three specific needs, and did things all completely different. They gave us their schedules, and each schedule was completely different. And so I think that we're going to have to look at each school. What do they need? What is available? What, what can we do for them? Because it will be different. Aquadale's transportation issues will be different than a school in downtown Albemarle. So they will be different. The word unique, it's just every situation will be unique. Just like before, they had three tiers. They actually started three different times. And they were basing their before-school care and after-school care on a fee-based model, which we are blessed to have the savings that we're going to put with our bus, our money that would be used, having buses on the road, that we've earmarked that money toward these programs, correct? And I think it's our, it's going to be up to the board to really protect that fund, funding in order to provide this for our families, because that's what we have promised.
And I think that she'll speak to this, but the, each schools, because it was tailored to that, each school got to choose whether they wanted to do early school care or after school care, so morning or after, and it was tailored specifically to that school. And so the choo, the schools got to choose that, okay?
And some did both, and some, from year to year, it was different, depending on, you know, what needs were they had that year, so. Technology, we have put a lot of money in technology in the last few years. We can use that technology that we have in our hands to create enrichment activities for our before-school and after-school programs. As far as the after-school, I know the Spark program is already in effect, and hopefully that will continue to help out with the after-school programs. They use teacher assistants, they use TAs. They were very much focused on having a site coordinator, whoever that was, a person that had the time, the talent, and the passion, and the availability to put to that program. And I think that's the key. They, they stated over and over again how important that person was. That person did not always have to be a teacher. It could be a TA or another staff member, but they had to have the passion to see this program succeed. They used a center-based model in most of their programs, which is pretty much what we would do, things, I mean, tons of different things, recreation, technology, STEM, Lego activities, even student-generated. We had one group of students wanting to do quilting activities. They found somebody, brought them in, let's, we're going to do this. They did service projects for different nursing homes and things like that, music, and they took advantage of something that teachers don't do enough, that probably, as a school system, we don't do enough. They wrote grants. They got grants for different programs, for different activities, for different manipulatives and things they could use. So they did all of this without the aid of any outside agencies. They did all of this in-house. So we have partners in our county that can come along and come into our schools and partner with us. I think we can do this. Principals reported, principals reported that kids loved it. I know we see it as torture for our little kids, and my grandson going to Aquadale at 7:30 in the morning when school doesn't start till 8:45, but they were reporting the kids loved it. The kids didn't want to miss a day, because this was the day they did this activity. They did talk about that we're in a time crunch. We, as Stanley County, making this decision, and I do applaud the board in go ahead and making the decision so that we can, if we're going to do it, let's do it right. Let's get, get our ducks to going and get going on this. One thing that we talked about on the way home was a parent survey. Right now, we don't know how many people that go to each school will need before-school care, after-school care. This needs to be done right away. We also need your staff surveyed. What staff members in these schools are going to be wanting to provide services? And it doesn't need to be, oh, just any old person we can put in there. We need to pick excellent people. This is a situation where it's going to be above and beyond, and these people need to be able to go above and beyond. They did agree to share all their information, all their forms, all their applications with us from Wake County, and that will be a huge asset to us, so we can look at that and model that to scale to our needs. So, what else?
The one thing, also, Mr. James, correct me, or Dr. James, correct me if I'm wrong. There are already some grants in place for before and after-school care. Is that something that will also supplement these programs?
Yes, but I, I don't want it misrepresented. We're not doing anything because of the grant.
Right, 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 yes.
We have the capacity for 250 students, and I will tell you that the way federal grants are written, and Susan's in the room, so she'll tell you that we were sweating a little bit, because we don't draw down the federal dollars unless we comply with what we said we were going to do.
Right.
We were actually about 30 students short of being able to pull down our third installment, which is pretty hefty. We get $1.2 million over three years, $400,000 broken up in quarterly installments. So $100,000 we were going to be missing if we couldn't get our enrollment up. So we're able at the schools that offer Spark. If we're not getting the enrollment we need, we can, again, tailor that to the need of that school. So that's, we, we do have to amend our grant, but that, that's doable. It's not an issue. So there are some other, there are some current federal dollars out there that we can do some amendments on and actually use to our advantage to help support it. So yes, you're absolutely correct, so.
I just, I, I just want to make sure that, we were the two advocates, you know, that were asked to go on the task force, and we just want to make sure that if this is something we're going to do, that it's not just thrown together, but it does require us to, to get the ball rolling quickly if we're going to do it right. I know that it's not going to appease everybody, and it, it certainly doesn't, you know, fit my, tailored to my needs immediately, but if we're going to do it, I do want to make sure that, you know, it, it's done correctly, so.
Yes, and the ball's already rolling. It started with you guys going to get some information. There's a task force together. We'll be reaching out to the different individuals in the community. We have a brochure or advertisement going out, hope, to businesses in the community. We're going to do a brainstorming session with businesses and have them sort of tailor to us what they feel they could provide, if we can rotate them in and out of the, you talk center-based learning, we can actually use some businesses, you know, to rotate through the schools and provide some services for us and give us some quotes and stuff, so we can put the program together. But we have a principals' meeting Thursday, so in our breakout session with those schools, we'll, we'll ask the principals to find a passionate coordinator.
Yes.
And then start getting parents together on their individual school team, and then start meeting to get some feedback. But yeah, that's all underway. And of course, the biggest part of this is making those routes and making sure they're efficient. So the consultant is actually here this week. I think I meet with him Thursday. Thank you for your input. And again, we'll be tapping into your skill set, and hopefully other teachers that have concerns, and community members. We, it's a partnership, so we, no change is not easy, but again, it has worked in, you went to Wake, because Wake has done it for about 15 years, and they're doing it with over 50 schools, and I figure if anybody's done it right, they have, and they've went through the, the learning curve, you know, quite a few schools to get where they're at today, but thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the opportunity, and we certainly, I mean, on the way back, we were like, okay, what do we need to do next? What's the next step you want us to do? So we're here, and we're ready to do whatever we need to do.
Before you go, before you go.
Sorry.
Before you go, did they make you aware of some of the biggest hurdles that they had to deal with initially when they kicked this off?
I think the, the biggest thing they talked about was the key of having the passionate, qualified, able-bodied, you know, the people in there, the, the right fit, you know, to make sure that, you know, the first person that applied and said, "Oh, I'll do it," you know, that they really made sure that they took the time to have the key people in place. And because there's a lot of people, you know, if you had say, hey, you know, and to make it worth the people's while. As far as the certified staff, they did a cap amount per hour, and then classified, I think they did time and a half for them. But I think their key thing was having the, tailoring it to the students, tailoring it to the needs of the students and the school, and then just making sure you had key staff in. And really making it where it wasn't like, okay, you guys just hang out in the gym, and then, okay, school's starting. But it was like, when they came in, that it's like the transition from before-school care to school starting was just basically moving from one educational environment to another. And one thing that I did not mention, that I thought was really neat with the lower grades, the K-1 grades, they kind of divided their day up in thirds with, because I was alarmed they had lunch for kindergarteners like at 1:00. I'm like, oh, you know, but they did like, the early morning, they would have, then they would have their like English math, you know, ELA math, then they would have a break, a little snack. Then they did another group of academics, then they would have lunch, and then they had the, the third section of their day. So they did that for younger grades, which they said seemed to help with a little bit longer day. It kind of broke it up a little differently. And they also weaned the kids from like the pre-K concept of rest time, they kind of weaned that off in the first few weeks of school, which I think we probably do anyway already. I think that's probably the procedure that we do. But they said, "Have staff," you know, "Have the staff there." And they were really protective of their program, and they really did not, I mean, they said they had the YMCA begging to come in and take over their before-school program. They're like, "No." But it generated revenue for them, but also, they, they had a pride in what they accomplished with the kids, and the kids liked the service projects and the things they did in their community that the kids gave back. It was really affirming to the school and the kids, so. But I think probably the thing was your key staff members, and making sure they're compensated, so.
I'd like to thank you very much for taking your time to go and do this. Any other board members have a question they want to ask while we?
Only board members? Is that only board members?
Just board members, yes. They're addressing the board. Any other board members? Okay. Not, we thank you very much. Dr. James?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, okay, first of all, for all of that information and what you're doing. So they use people in their school, so it's not outside, and they pay, they compensate their teacher or teacher assistants, whoever's doing this. And I'm assuming that they kind of are able to plan somehow, they get together and, and plan what they're doing. Those children aren't, they're not charged anything.
Yes, they are.
They are charged something to be able to do this.
That's what we said was very different with our county, and in a way, in a positive way.
Right. How much are they charged?
It was extreme, $90 a month?
Before and after-school care, they said that they charged a fee of nine, like it was around $96 a month.
Ms. Gibson, can I, can I just interject real quick? I, I'd like to ask the superintendent a real quick question before we go down this route. Dr. James, are we proposing that we're charging a single cent to any parent, student, or relative, or anyone in the universe for our before or after-school care next year?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Gibson, you've got, reclaim your time. You've got the floor.
Well, I think that's all been taken away. Thank you.
Yeah, it was a completely operational, a separate operational thing for Wake County, so, and ours is not.
And I apologize if I confused it.
No, you didn't.
Because to me, it was a, Ms. Gibson, it was a, we were ahead of the game in the fact that we were not dependent in having to charge people, but we were, we had the funding, and we were going to protect that funding to provide these programs at no additional charge. And I apologize if that was a confusing remark, so.
Okay, and was, was, like, their programs only offered the, the before care, so they had the programs offered after-school as well?
Depended upon the school.
It was, it was all dependent upon the, each individual school and the need of the school.
So those, those early start schools could have that, those programs, whatever they are?
They actually started, the, one of the schools we talked to, they started at 9:15, and they did a pre, pre-care before that, pre, so, yeah. But it was each individual school, and that was, and so it was whatever they needed, and they said sometimes it varied year to year. And they said sometimes it varied year to year, or it was kinda cyclical as far as the needs of the parents and the needs of the school.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. James, you have any other?
Yes, I just wanna recognize this is Teacher Appreciation Week. And, uh, thank Ms. Belt for, and the NCA for, uh, they're stepping up for teachers and NCAC support of, uh, working with teachers and other educators across the state. But it's also School Nurse Day, May eighth. So, a lot of times, school nurses get overlooked, and they are an important part of the equation. And again, our hopes are that the state's gonna step up and give us additional funding so we can increase the number of school nurses, counselors, and, um, psychologists that we use, since we're in desperate need of that and, of course, looking at our society today. But again, congratulations to teachers. Uh, we appreciate all the hard work you do. Uh, you do matter. And as Melissa reported out, you know, it's disheartening when you hear we lose teachers to other districts because of differential in pay. And, you know, while I know we can't compete with Charlotte Mick and probably Union, it'd be nice to be in line with some of the other counties, uh, that are around us so we could attract the better quality teachers. So, thanks again to the teachers, and I'm done. Thank you, Chairman Poole.
Tonight, we'll start off with, uh, a fellow board member who has made one more trip around the sun as of yesterday. Happy birthday, Ms. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Um, I want to congratulate everyone that was honored tonight with a award or anything of that sort. Uh, I'm very proud of everyone that has done that. I had the pleasure of going to the last concert for Ms. Asa Hudson from North Stanley High School on Saturday night, and it was awesome. And I really hate to lose her 'cause she is one of our really good teachers. She's done a great job at North Stanley, and I think she was in the Arnhem School System before she went to, uh, North Stanley. I think she was there, she's been twenty-three years at North Stanley, and the other eight, I think, was at, uh, in the Arnhem School System before we merged. Um, but anyway, she did a great job. Um, students were very proud of what she has done for them. And one young man said, uh, she's not only taught me music, she's taught me a lot of things about life, how you're supposed to live, how you're supposed to do, and things like that. So, I really, really congratulate her for a good job and all that she's done for our students. I think, um, I really wanna tell our teachers how much we do appreciate them. And I hate to know that some of them are going, trying to leave in Stanley County, but Stanley County, like Ms. Belt said, is a nice, a great place to live and grow your children. So, um, with that, we're close to another year over, so enjoy yourself. Do really good, and thank you so much.
Mr. Chance, again, welcome to the Order of Metal in the Legs, and it's good to have you back upright.
Thank you, I feel like a body man. Certainly wanna thank all the teachers for the hard work you do and the dedication you put into teaching our students each and every day. Uh, obviously, none of us would have a reason to be here were it not for you and what you do in the classrooms. Uh, I don't know that there's any way to properly thank teachers enough for what they do. Um, certainly wanna thank our school nurses as well for the work they do. Uh, they're a integral part of our school system and provide a tremendous, uh, service that is sometimes under-recognized. Uh, again, congratulate all those who were recognized this evening, in whatever way or manner. Congratulate them in those accomplishments. Um, also appreciate, um, anyone who, uh, is willing to speak to the board for or against an issue, whatever it may be. We appreciate your comments and your input. Um, that's all I have to say, Mr. Poole, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chance. Ms. Gibson?
I'm just echoing, um, certainly happy Teacher Appreciation Week. I appreciate all of our teachers and, and what they do each and every day. I appreciate the fact that they keep that magic going in the classroom, even at this time of the year. I've already mentioned Ms. Gaff, but thank you once again for allowing me to be a part of the AIG. As far as like a stakeholder in, in that, um, I appreciate all that all of you AIG teachers do. Also had the pleasure of, um, being asked to judge the SEC, um, the Stanley Early College, Capstone Projects, Mr. Adams. That, those are always amazing. Those students are just wonderful. Hey, um, I know you're proud. Everybody should be proud. I know they're proud. Thank you, and, and thank Ms. Janet Ross as well, and Ms. Russell. I enjoyed my, I truly enjoyed my time. Congratulations to everyone who received awards tonight. Jim Kennedy was a great friend of mine. I taught with Jim Kennedy at West Stanley High School. Many, many wonderful memories of him, so. For Rebecca Crisco and, and John Williams being recognized with arts educators and Person of the Year, that's wonderful. Thank you, Ms. D, um, for the presentation of Millingport. I enjoyed, I enjoyed that. And I know that they are very happy that you are there. Thank you to those who spoke during the public comments. And, um, Ms. Belt, always thank you for sharing things and being a real advocate for our teachers as well. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Mr. McIntyre?
I just wanna echo, uh, my fellow board members, uh, on congratulating everyone who was recognized tonight. Uh, thank you to all of our, um, speakers, community members that came out to address us for or against certain issues. Ms. Howell and Ms. Bundy, thank you so much for all the time that you put in and for going to Wake County. And a special thanks to all of our teachers for all of you, all that you do. And again, um, thank you to all of our faithful central office staff, administrators, teachers that come to each and every board meeting. We really do appreciate you guys coming out. Thank you.
Mr. Crowe?
Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all of our teachers, although we know that you work every week of the year. Even in the summer, you're not sitting around. You're lesson planning. You are, uh, growing your knowledge. And, um, every now and then, you get to take a sit-down break, I know, but I sure do appreciate you. And as every day passes with a senior right now in high school, I am a little more reflective and grateful for her teachers. Ms. Howell, you're one of them. You're her favorite. That's the truth. I want to thank, uh, everyone here for your comments. Those who are skeptical, those who don't like what's going on, thank you for coming and speaking. And, um, I'm part of the group that Mr. Thomas has created online, and I see the messages. I get notifications through the day, and when I get a chance, I'll read over them. Mr. Thomas and I have had a phone conversation, a lengthy one. Um, and I try to respond to some of those messages when I have answers and when I have some time. I do want you to know that we're looking at those. Uh, I've, and many times, I sit down and I send over many questions to Dr. James. Do I not send you a text and said, I need answers on this, this, and this? We hear you, and, uh, we want this to be as smooth a transition as everyone. I have three children in the school system, and while I don't have any in the elementary school, I was there just last year with one of mine and, uh, would have been affected and can imagine how it would change my life to, um, have to come up with something new. Uh, every time my children, I have an eighteen-year-old, sixteen-year-old, eleven-year-old, and every time they went to a different level of school, we had to try something different. Every time, uh, I might have changed jobs, I had to try something different. Um, we had to maybe call on a new person to help us, or we had to, uh, look at a daycare, or we had to get my mom's help. And sometimes she couldn't help, so I would have to find someone else. So, I understand how difficult that is. Um, and it's just all part of those changes. And I don't say that in a cavalier way. I say that with understanding. Continue with your questions. I would ask that your questions are respectful, and most, most have been, not all. We've gotten some emails where people have put us on blast, and I get it. I was standing, uh, out there speaking just a few years ago, and I've put some people on blast too, so I know. But if you want to have a conversation, send me your message. Send me your phone and, uh, number, and, and we'll talk. Um, some, some of us have done that. Moving on, be patient. There are many people that are working on this, and I have full faith in our central office staff. They're calling, uh, other people who have been experts at this staggered start. Uh, I'm very glad to know that Ms. Bundy and Ms. Howell went. I appreciate your skepticism when you came. I appreciate you coming back with still some skepticism, but more optimism than anything. And, uh, maybe some of the parents who are skeptical, we can work out a way for you to talk some, to some people who could put some perspective on that, that have been more seasoned with it. And, and that's basically all I wanna say. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week, and, um, thank you for all you do, teachers.
Mr. Graves?
Thank you, Chairman Poole. I do want to, um, also congratulate everyone who was a recipient of an award, uh, tonight. In particular, Cadet Ingram, that is impressive. And, um, you know, I, I'm not that old, but I'm old enough that I've, I've run into enough people in life when you can look at someone and you can see that they are destined for greatness. And he is. And that's, um, so, I wanna, I wanna thank you, Major Reed, for giving him the opportunity because that is the definition of leadership. You have to be flexible. And, and the military recognizes that. Until you, until you, uh, until you enlist, you are, you will get your hair cut. But, um, but thanks for doing that for him. Uh, and I'm super impressed because he has been, um, an example to other people in, in his school. And so, I'm excited about the future, particularly for, for students in other high schools in the, in the county that will become part of the ROTC program, uh, which is, which is fantastic. So, thank you so much. Um, also, uh, I noted Adrian, uh, DeMiglio's, uh, very fancy suit. I'm gonna have to find out where he got that. I need one of those. Um, and going to UNC, uh, for computer science is also impressive. Um, it is a very difficult school to get into, especially if you wanna, wanna go to, for computer science. So, um, him, Tamara Rice, and I believe it was Whitley Low or Whitney, Whitley? Yeah, I wanted to congratulate all of them. Alexis Johnson, um, and, and the, the Fine Arts Education, uh, Educator in Person, Award Recipients, Rebecca and John, um, fantastic. I got to see The Nutcracker, and it was, it was awesome. And the set was fantastic too. So, I wouldn't expect anything less from him. He's got a, like, twenty-year history of, of producing outstanding artwork here in the county. So, we're very fortunate to have him, have both of them. Um, I do wanna thank Mrs. D, uh, for her presentation. But I wanna especially thank Mrs. Thornburg because what I appreciate the most is, um, when I see these reports from the various elementary schools, and Millingport has done a phenomenal job, it's that, um, Mrs. D stepped into a relatively difficult situation, like other principals in the county. Um, but working with Mrs. Thornburg, who's an instructional specialist, uh, the, the, the difference you've been able to make this year is incredibly impressive. And Dr. James said it, and I will echo that. It is very impressive. But what's exciting is that we're seeing the same type of, um, we're seeing the same type of change throughout Stanley County. So, I'm excited to see where we're at, at the end of the year. But thank you guys for doing that. And I really wanna thank her for taking the time to share that information. A lot of people, you know, just, you know, sort of get glassy-eyed when they hear it, um, or tune out. But it's very important, very important to share that information and the progress. So, thank you so much. I wanna talk about the staggered busing, uh, for a second here. And, and I do wanna thank, first of all, before I get started, I wanna thank Matt Thomas, who's, who's here because we did have a conversation. I still owe you a video, by the way. I haven't forgotten about that, and I appreciate your patience. I've been super busy. Patty and I, um, spoke with, with Mr. Thomas for quite a bit of time. And, and, uh, his situation, like everybody's situation, is, is unique. And, and I, what I really appreciated about our conversation with him was he understood, um, while he wasn't happy with it, and he, he clearly, I don't think, has changed his mind about that fact. He understands also, I think, after talking with us, that we did not go into this decision with our eyes wide shut. And so, I wanna just refresh everybody's memory real quick because, like Patty said, we have gotten, um, a number of emails, have been very respectful, ask questions. Um, I've been hit up on Facebook, Messenger. I always give people my, my phone number. I will talk to them, uh, until two, three o'clock in the morning. We have, can, can have conversations the next day. Um, I'm happy to talk about this stuff. But what's frustrating is when you keep hearing the same arguments that have been addressed over and over and over and over, getting brought up. Um, unfortunately, um, if you look around, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of the regular people here that attend, and most of them are staff and, and media that attend these meetings, but there are very few new people every month. And of course, several years ago, we used to have packed rooms when people were talking about consolidation. But that's an issue that's come up. So, I just want to encourage people who are watching this YouTube video, and certainly I'll point to this. Did a presentation last year, and, um, and Peter, who's here, Peter Ashudo, uh, has, has studied this stuff quite a bit. We disagree on, on this, but, um, we've studied it. And I came out with a video, uh, that I did with John Edwards, uh, from Oakboro, and it was, uh, Capacity and Utilization. And the subject of consolidation has come up. Our new superintendent, Dr. Jeff James, still new, um, has spoken many times. Consolidation only works if you can also get rid of the students. And we can't. The students, if we closed half the schools in Stanley County, the only thing that we're gonna save is utilities. That's it. Because we own the buildings, with the exception of maybe Ridge Crest, Ridge Crest that we closed that we're still paying for. The majority of the cost, it's over ninety percent, is payroll. That's the savings. So, unless we ship the kids out of the county, we still have to employ the same number of teachers. Now, unless you feel like the one or two cafeteria or child nutrition workers that lose their jobs don't count, I think they count. If you, if you, maybe a few TAs lose their job, if you think they don't count, I disagree. And the reality is, is that when you close a school, it has a tremendous impact on the community, a negative impact. We've talked about this. So, I encourage you to go back and watch those videos. Spend hours talking about this stuff with real data to back it up. But the reason why we had to do this staggered start, and I also wanna thank, uh, Mrs. Bundy and Mrs. Um, Howell for going out to Wake County. Thank you so much because, you know, you were concerned about this, we were concerned about this, but a lot of study went into this. We've talked about this meeting after meeting. We did not take this decision carelessly. We understand that people are gonna be impacted by it. But we also understand that, um, no one in Stanley County is gonna step up and make the decision that we're gonna stop providing buses for our middle schools and high schools. We have fifteen vacancies, plus additional vacancies in the morning, as Dr. James said. How are we gonna fill them? Which schools are not going to have busing if we don't deal with this situation? We've already, we're dealing with it now. But if we didn't deal with it, who's gonna be the person to say we're not gonna be providing busing? Certainly not the people that are complaining. So, we had to make a tough decision. I think it was the best decision. We've been flexible. And here's the thing, the school board is not doing this. We're not implementing this. The school system is implementing it. I'm not casting the blame over to them, but what I'm seeing is we have the full faith and confidence in the superintendent that we hired and the staff that we employ in the school system and the, and the process that they're undergoing, that we didn't just learn about tonight. This was talked about numerous times, the process. If we made the su, decision to move forward, if it was the right decision, by the way, I have challenged people. People have said, if- People have said, if we can come up with a better idea, will you guys consider it? Absolutely. I know I can speak on behalf of every member of this board and the superintendent, if there was a better way, we would listen, we would do it. There isn't. We understand the frustration, we understand the pressures that this is going to place on certain people, but we do have to deal with this situation. I'm confident that we made the right choice. I would encourage people to go back, watch the previous videos from the previous meetings, watch videos that we've done on staggered busing, spent many hours on this stuff. And as Patty said, it's going to require on, on the part of some families, they're going to have to make some significant changes, we understand that. And, and we regret that. For the businesses, a business that's, that, that the school's letting out forty minutes later, it's letting out at three forty and they're starting to do classes at four o'clock? So you move, so you move something fifteen minutes. I've talked to a lot of business owners and the business owners have said they've had to make changes, they're going to have to make some minor changes, not significant changes. So, if people have specific examples, I would encourage them, don't send me an email, send me a Facebook message, we can have a conversation on the phone. And, and we can talk about this, but we are moving forward. Dr. James and his staff are doing the right thing, they're working every single day on this. So, hopefully, the, the, the information that's been, been spread around for the last couple of years about money and things like that, hopefully they'll go back and watch and get educated about it so we don't have people out in the community being misinformed. And that's all I have to say, Dr. James and Chairman Poole.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Just like to make another comment about Mr. Ingram. I'm, I'm thankful being old-school military that I didn't walk in your class the first two or three sessions there, I would have probably stroked out right there on the spot. But I think we find out that when he arrived at that point himself, it will be a much more lasting, settled issue with him as he goes through his military career, so. Appreciate your patience with him. I'd like to make a comment, I don't talk a whole lot about sports, but I think Stanley County is, can be extremely proud of what's been going on the last few weeks. As, as of the end of last week, we had, uh, two girls softball teams in, in the state playoffs, that South Stanley and West Stanley. We had two baseball teams, North Stanley Boys and West Stanley Boys in the playoffs. And we also had soccer, South Stanley Girls Soccer was in state playoff for the first time, I understand, didn't quite make the cut tonight, but at least that's a start. Next year, build on this year. But anyway, I'm proud of all those that participated in, sports does have its place in, in our, in our education and sports has a place in developing leadership qualities and teamwork qualities in people that they're going to need in life as much as the academics sometimes. I was, made the recipient of about an inch and a half of printed material from a concerned citizen about the stagger system and I will be wading through that as quickly as I can and pass it on to other board members so you can also read through it at your leisure. Our next, we, as soon as we find out when the commissioners give us numbers on a budget, we will set up a meeting to, after our staff has time to do the shifting of whatever we get to where we need it to be. And we'll, we'll meet to vote at that time to approve our budget for that upcoming year. So sometime in May, next, maybe the next couple of weeks, we'll try to work that in. Other than that, Tuesday, the next regular meeting will be Tuesday, June the fourth, here in the Commons Room at seven PM. Chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session for personnel matters under North Carolina General, North Carolina General Statute 143 through 18, 11A6, student matters under North Carolina General Statute 43, correction, 143, 318.11A1, and attorney-client matters under North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A3.
Moved to go into closed session.
Motion to go under, into closed session under those aforementioned statutes, do we have a second? Any discussion? Here, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, five-minute recess and root to close. Okay, Chair calls the open meeting back to order. Mr. Ryan is recognized for a motion.
Move approval of Section 2A.
A motion is to approve Section 2A of the personnel agenda. Do we have a second? Have a second, Ms. Watson, is there any discussion? Here, none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Motion adjourned by Mr. McIntyre, do we have a second? Second, Mr. Chance, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Meeting is adjourned, thank you.